Apologies to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Any public comment? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The next item up is, uh, public comments, and this time it's open for anybody in the public that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda tonight. This is your opportunity. Do we have any public comment? Step forward. Make sure that, uh, mic's on, Kathy. Pull it up and hit the button now.
Councillors and others, my name is Kathy Walker, and I live at five Old Cobra Road. I'm happy to be here on a night when Denise is recognized and Paula is welcome, but those aren't the, that's not the reason why I'm here. I wish to publicly go on record in opposition to the unanimous vote of this town council at your special meeting on February 22nd. This vote authorized the town manager to sign a commitment to send our garbage to the conceptual fiberite facility.
It was on, I thought. As a bit of background, I'm sure you know that the Hampden landfill is in my backyard. That fact has made me more aware of solid waste issues over the past forty years than I would really like to be. I followed news of the PERC fiberite decision, and I've watched for this item to appear on your agenda, and I would have come and spoken if it had been on a regular meeting agenda. Somehow, I missed notice of the special meeting. So I'm here to briefly, very briefly, state my concerns tonight. I know that I'm beating a dead horse, but that hasn't stopped me in the past. Am I the only person in Hampden who says enough already? Haven't we been the recipient of the state's garbage long enough? Why does the municipal review committee think that a facility that has never been built in this country needs to be built in Hampden? I realize that several councillors have spent many hours on this issue. I realize that the projected tax revenue looks good to councillors. I realize that the facility still has to meet DEP and planning board approval. It was interesting to note, however, in the editorial, in the weekend edition of the BDN, that DEP approval was mentioned, but the town approval was not mentioned. I'm assuming that was just an oversight. I realize that PERC did not come through with a proposal to the committee until the eleventh hour. There are still questions about the long-term viability of that proposal from PERC. Aren't there more questions about the viability of this facility that has never been built? A facility that is based on new technology? A facility that has limited flexibility for the reduction of waste, something we've all been working on, especially organic waste? I realize that fiberite will cover the construction costs. Why is the town giving up our accumulated equity in PERC to help fund the infrastructure costs? I also realize that both Bangor and Brewer have signed commitments with fiberite. It almost feels like I'm in front of a runaway train. And my final comment, I realize that state-of-the-art means many things to different people. Generating methane from trash is a relatively new state-of-the-art. I would remind you that burying garbage in a gravel pit at one time was state-of-the-art, and we know what happened there. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is policy agenda and the news presentations and awards. First item is Denise Hodgson's retiring from the town clerk for fifteen years of service. Denise has asked not to receive any plaques or awards, but the, uh, staff is, didn't agree with her, so. If Denise would join me. So I'll say this on behalf of the girls in the office that have worked with you a lot longer than I have, how much they're gonna miss you and how much they appreciate everything you've done for them. But on the other hand, I want to thank you for the four years that I've been on the council, that if I've ever had any questions, any issues, I come to you, and you've always been very good to answer all those questions for me, helpful all the time, excellent attitude. Denise, I've really enjoyed working with you, and I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And I think at this time, town manager Angus Jennings would like to say a couple of words.
I'd like to, uh, echo the mayor's comments. When I got Denise's, uh, news that she was planning to retire, I was very happy for her and continue to be happy for her on a personal level, her and her family. This is a big milestone, and, um, we're very excited for what's next for you, and we think it will be, uh, hopefully, a very happy time in your life. On a professional level, it was not good news. We've been very fortunate to hire Paula, and we're very excited to work with Paula Scott, and I think people will, um, will be very happy, but, uh, losing Denise, Denise is an irreplaceable person, there's no question about that, both professionally and personally. So I've been very, uh, fortunate in my, uh, just over six months working with the community to, uh, have the support of such a tremendous team member, and I know I speak for everybody in the building when I say that. Uh, just a couple of, uh, points of information for those watching from home. Denise was hired, uh, just after the first of the year, in two thousand and one, so is a fifteen-year tenured employee with the town. Uh, she serves as the town clerk and the registrar of voters. Uh, she's a certified municipal clerk, which is, uh, national certification, uh, that she earned over the course of three years, attending a full week each year over three years. Uh, so it's a very rigorous, uh, certification, and something that has brought real value to the community. Uh, she's also served on the board of the Susan G. Komen Foundation for the Cure from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen, and was on the Bangor Race for the Cure Committee from two thousand and one to two thousand and seven, and again in two thousand and nine to two thousand and eleven. Uh, reaching back a bit further, Denise was the president of her graduating class at Hampden Academy. And was a member of the National Honor Society, so.
Wow, where did you get all that information?
Well, I would. So. Before, uh, before your, uh, you know, last moment on this stage, anyway, I wanted to make sure that, uh, the public recognizes what an asset we've had.
Thank you. The other thing is, I wanted to remind people, there's gonna be an open house Thursday from one to six for, uh, people to come in and say their goodbyes and stuff to Denise on Thursday. Any other comments? Anybody would like to say?
The only thing I'd like to say is I'm still mad, and will continue to be mad. Um, but, um, I, it has been a pleasure and a joy to work with Denise, um, and it's been so much help for me when I was a new councillor, and even up to today, to be able to pick up the phone, ask questions, and to get directions. So, uh, I can't say enough how much I appreciate you and, and your efforts, and again, I'm still mad.
You'll get over it.
I, I think it's wonderful. I wish you were all in the room to watch councillor Saroy actually sort of pout, you know? This Iraq War veteran, big guy banker, it's nice to see him upset at something like this. Um, and I'll note that in everything else that you cited accurately about Denise, I got a chance to meet her parents this week, and it explained quite a bit about Denise's, uh, personality and character, and we will miss you.
Okay, the next.
Thank you all very much for the kind words. I will definitely miss the people in the town of Hampden.
Thank you, Denise. Next item is, uh, welcome the newly appointed clerk, Paula Scott. Tonight is our official first set-in for the, uh, council. We welcome you, and look forward to many years of you working for the town of Hampden also. The next item was public hearings. We don't have any public hearings on the agenda tonight. The nominations, appointments, and elections. This time, we, uh, wanna do the appointment of Paula Scott as the registrar of voters. Do we have a motion?
I move that we nominate, uh, Paula Scott as the registrar of voters.
A second.
Public comment, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? None? The next item is the nomination of Paula Scott as the agent for Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Any public comment? Do I have a motion? Or a question?
Uh, it's reference to the last item, if I could ask a question about that first.
Yeah?
Uh, do we have to disappoint Denise as the registrar? Thank you.
So do I have a... Anybody gonna nominate for, uh?
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the nomination of Paula Scott as the agent for Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife.
A second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item is unfinished business. First item is service fees. The abatements for finance committee tonight, discuss those abatements, and I'll have the chairman of the finance committee review that.
Uh, just a brief overview of the discussion had tonight in finance committee on the abatement of properties, uh, that are considered property subject to service charges. Um, the properties are located, or are part of, the property owner's community housing and of Maine. Medicare care, Medicaid, medical care development, doing business as Hampden Meadows. OHI on two properties, Panquist Mental Health and the Housing Foundation. It was agreed by, in finance, that we would, uh, the five properties that have paid up to this point, that we would move forward with abatement.
Public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, approve, uh, moving forward with abatement on the properties noted.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? None? The next item would be the process for collections.
As noted, um, the properties, there's one property, uh, which is medical care development, uh, doing business as Hampden Meadows, um, is, has not made payments and has, in the past, and, um, on two thousand and sixteen taxes, so we're gonna move forward, uh, with the process of collection on, on said properties and/or taxes.
Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, move forward with the process of collection on the property noted, um, Hampden Meadows on twelve eighty-two Kennebec Road.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item under unfinished business is the HVAC system quote, recommendations of infrastructure and finance. Councillor Saroyz.
Uh, we, uh, discuss, um, the quote for HA, HVAC, uh, system. The first thing we'll be doing is, uh, the red link thermometer system. Uh, the bill's just, uh, nine hundred dollars, and we are going to pay for that using reserve funds in the municipal building.
Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, move forward with, to pay, uh, the nine hundred dollars for, again, the red li, uh, red link, uh, thermometer system out of the reserve fund for, uh, municipal building.
Second, um, and I would also note, just for discussion, that this, uh, was investigated a lot in the infrastructure committee as well, with the recommendation to finance to go ahead.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item is new business, dangerous building hearing notice. Uh, over the past several months, we've been discussing the property at seven fifty-eight Main Road North. The building is getting ready to collapse, uh, it's in danger of going into Route One A. Code enforcement has sent several letters. We've got a list here in front of us of how many different times they've, uh, contacted and tried to resolve this problem. So tonight, uh, we wanna vote on whether or not we're gonna send this letter out for the dangerous building. Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion? Councillor McAvoy?
Do we, is this a motion, or we, do we just refer this for public hearing like we do everything else? I think we're gonna send that one out.
Right, in order for, in order to send the notice of hearing that's in your packet, I would need a vote of the council, uh, but we've been proceeding, um, with the, the date on the twenty-first that's in here has not been published. Uh, it relies on the vote of the council to, uh, lock that in, but we have arranged, uh, for the town attorney to be present that night, so we're ready to go forward that night if it's the council's will.
Thank you.
Then I'll make a motion, we authorize the town manager to send that notice of hearing.
I'll make the second, or, um, I'll second that, but with a note that we have been discussing this for numerous months, um, and trying to come to a resolution without any success whatsoever.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item on the new business is foreclosed properties, request to advertise for public sale. Oh, sorry. Skipped right over, budget adjustments for TIF, CEA payments. Town manager Jennings will explain that.
Sure.
So, um, as the council's aware, that, um, uh, community has entered into a number of tax increment financing agreements over the years, most recently with AmeriMaine, and as part of the TIF agreements, uh, there have been so-called credit enhancement agreements, which, uh, entitle, once those are executed, both between the municipality and the, uh, landowner, those are also approved by the state, and once that happens, uh, those go into effect, and, uh, depending on the terms of the credit enhancement agreement, uh, it typically entitles the, uh, developer to essentially a rebate of a portion of the property taxes paid. Uh, so the way that works in, uh, practice is the property owners assess the full amount of taxation, they pay the full bill. Uh, upon receipt of the, uh, total amount due, a percentage is then sent back to, uh, the landowner. So, in order for, uh, my office to send back the amounts due under the credit enhancement agreements, that amount needs to have been budgeted, uh, in the current fiscal year. So because the FY sixteen budget as approved, uh, did not carry the full amount to cover the credit enhancement agreement obligations, uh, I've recommended to the, um, finance committee, and the committee, uh, agreed with the recommendation to authorize a budget adjustment of, uh, in the amount of eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and eleven cents from the unassigned fund balance to the TIF budget account, uh, which will provide, uh, the revenues that we need to honor those agreements under the credit enhancement agreement. I wanna, uh, make clear for those watching from home, uh, what's happened here is, is essentially an accounting, uh, mix-up in last budget, but the amounts that were reported to the state on the form that sets the property tax rate were, were reported correctly. It was recorded correctly locally, it was reported correctly to the state, uh, so the amounts that, um, recommending the council transfer through the budget adjustment were, in fact, budgeted. The funds were raised to cover these obligations. Uh, it simply threw a, uh, mix-up, uh, at the local level, it didn't get into the budget document, which it needed to, to happen. So certainly for the FY seventeen budget, uh, you will see the, uh, full amount budgeted to meet the credit enhancement agreement payments at minimum, and it will be within the budget discussions of whether the council would also like to budget additional TIF monies, which would be available for, uh, TIF eligible purposes.
Thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion that, um, we make the budget, uh, budget adjustment, uh, for TIF payments.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Councillor?
I just, you know, speaking to the public again, um, I guess the way I would put this, and the town manager has al, already put it very well, I just wanna echo it, that nothing has changed from what we had been doing and what we knew we were doing, uh, except really an accounting mistake, that in all honesty, those of us who were on the council in the last budget process missed. So the public should know, nothing's different, no harm, no foul, but we, we screwed up on an accounting, uh, procedure that we won't screw up on next time.
Thank you.
And, and it should also be noted, and this information is in the packet, this, um, where the AmeriTIF was, uh, financially is greater than the prior TIFs, the, the amount that had been budgeted over the years had been adequate over the years to meet those credit enhancement agreement obligations. Uh, this year it was not because of the, um, size of that TIF, but in the, uh, the town attorney provided a three-page, uh, write-up that basically indicates that many communities in their first year of TIFs have run into this same budgeting issue, and in the earlier meeting, uh, with the finance committee, I've recommended that, uh, in the future, where there's a consultant engaged to execute the TIF, that they also have a role in making sure it's administered properly, although at this point, I'm very confident saying that, uh, between my work and, uh, Tammy Ewing, our finance, um, director, and our, uh, town, um, assessor Kelly Carter, we now have a very good handle on how this needs to be handled administratively.
Thank you. So we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? None? Thank you. So now going back to new business under foreclosed properties, request to advertise for public sale, map thirteen, lot twenty-seven A, map forty-one, lot eighteen, map one, lot fifty-six, and map three, lot eighteen A. These have all been delinquent in their taxes, and would request to go out, advertise for sale. Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion that we approve the request for advertising for public sale, uh, foreclosed properties noted as map thirteen, lot twenty-seven A, map forty-one, lot eighteen, map one, lot fifty-six, and map three, lot eighteen A.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item was Hampden Business Park renewal of authorization to sell agreement with Epstein's Commercial Real Estate. That was discussed last week in P and D, and councillor McPike?
Um, the planning and development committee, um, recommend it's to the council that we renew the, uh, um, sales agreement, uh, for our lots at the Hampden Business Park with, um, Epstein Commercial Real Estate. This is done yearly, and we recommend it to the, uh, council for renewal. And with that, I would make the motion, um...
Public comment first.
You wanna do a public comment? Okay.
Any public comment? Seeing none? Can I have a motion?
You can. Now you can. I would like to move that, uh, that we recommend the, uh, sales, uh, sale agreement with Epstein Commercial Real Estate for the Hampden, uh, lots in Hampden Business Park.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the committee reports. Services committee, councillor McAvoy.
Thank you. I have no, uh, report. We haven't met since the last, um, uh, town council meeting, but we are meeting next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Infrastructure committee, councillor Marble.
The infrastructure committee's last meeting was on February seventeenth. Uh, we referred to finance the purchase of a red link, red link thermostat for use of this building, as was mentioned earlier. We also recommended a finance that the annual donation to the Goodwill Riders Snowmobile Club be increased from the current one thousand annually to two thousand dollars. This will still leave the town with funds to cover the administrative cost of registering them. The committee was provided an update by the town manager and director of public works concerning the town's municipal stormwater year-two annual report. We were updated about the condition of the existing sewer line that was installed to serve ammo park. The director of public works had researched the issue of whether industrial outflow, as would the possible fiberite facility, would count towards the town's current purchased capacity with the Bangor wastewater treatment plant, and it was determined that industrial outflow would. The committee voted to continue a lease for the new John Deere front-end loader rather than to use the purchase option on the existing one. That was due to wear, tear, and downtime and expected costs. It was also decided to budget for a grapple attachment for that loader in order to move residents' brush taken to the transfer station to an area out back on the property, and thus avoid having to pay to have it hauled away.
Thank you. Planning and development?
Planning and development meant, uh, March, Monday, March, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, March second. A number of items went through was, uh, the, uh, draft for the mineral extraction repeal, and draft for home occupation are now in the attorney's hands, and, uh, subdivision ordinance criteria is in the process of being reworked. We did, I believe, get to us the private roads. The rework for the ordinance, uh, subdivision ordinance for private roads, and that has gone to planning. At this time. Codification, the town stepped into, I think, almost two years ago to redo everything for codification, and that is, I believe, it's looking at by everyone, has an April eighteenth deadline, is being finished. Uh, there's a continual update on, uh, MRC fiberite timelines, and it currently, they are still in the process of, of, uh, getting all that's, uh, everything done with the state that they need to do. Uh, the only other thing that we had was the Epstein Realty Business Park, and we already did that tonight.
Thank you. Finance and administration, councillor Saroyz.
Uh, most of the items that we discussed tonight were discussed during the council meeting, the service fees for abatement and process collection, as well as the, uh, HVAC system quote, and the budget adjustment for, uh, the TIF, as well as the foreclosed properties, which were mentioned earlier. Two items that were not discussed during the council meeting, one being the update on, uh, the recording of meetings. Right now, temporarily, we have, uh, former councillor Bill Shakespeare doing recordings for us here, as well as, uh, recordings, uh, at the school budget, or the school, uh, school board meetings, um, and that will continue until we get someone hired, and I guess we're in the process, we do have an applicant for that, that position. Um, as well, uh, we discussed, uh, the town manager, uh, six-month evaluation process, and we moving forward with that as well, and that's it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the managers' report.
I don't have a written report tonight, but I do have a, a few updates on items that were not on the agenda. Uh, we did get some, uh, welcome, good news from the state last week. Um, it's preliminary, but we do expect, uh, an increase in municipal revenue sharing for FY seventeen of about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so it won't solve all of our problems, but it will, it will not hurt. Uh, on the issue of, uh, the RSU twenty-two, uh, budgeting, uh, as you know, we've, uh, been working, uh, for the last several months with the other three communities in the RSU twenty-two district to share information and be in coordination on the municipal level, uh, and we've had, um, we appeared before the school board back in January to, uh, communicate what, the budget issue as we see it, and we had a, uh, meeting with the administration on February twenty-fifth. 25th that I would describe as constructive. We were able to share information about some of the challenges that we're looking at, and I think provide them hopefully some good information to help inform their budget process. I've advised the council, and those at home should be aware, the RSU 22 budget hearing has been scheduled for March 29th at 6:30 PM. And as Councilor Saroy said, that meeting, as well as other RSU 22 board meetings, will be recorded, and those will be available both through the town's YouTube channel and on local cable. The third item I have for update is following on the council's approval of the contract award for the upgrade of lighting at the library to LED lighting. We have executed a contract with Alco Electric, so that work is, they're now ordering the materials, and that work will go forward later this spring. And then finally, late last week, the local application was filed for the MRC Fiber Right. That came in on Thursday. It was sent out to peer review, and peer review is currently scoping what they'll need in terms of supplemental reviews. It's obviously a significant proposal. As Councilor McPike said, they are still in the process with DEP, awaiting three licenses there. And we expect that the public hearing at the planning board will open on Wednesday, April 13th. So if people are interested in that project, they can contact our community and economic development director, Dean Bennett, or call my office, and we're working to get those application materials online. We don't yet have them in digital format, but we, we want to make sure that information is available to those who are interested.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is councilor comments. Councilor Saroy.
I'm still mad.
Councilor McPike?
Just to thank you Denise, knowing you for quite a while, knowing your parents for a lot longer. Fortunately, they didn't go to school with me, went to school with my older brother and sisters. So congratulations and good luck in everything that you do in the future.
Councilor Wild?
Tonight, I only have a couple of comments, and I wanted to thank Denise for the assistance in the past that she gave me when I first started with this council stuff, because it's kind of mind-boggling, and Denise, you will definitely be missed greatly.
Councilor Marble?
I made the Denise comments earlier, and will again on Thursday, so on to two other things. I wanted folks to know that young Mr. Cassavant on Hampden's, on the RSU 22 track team, was awarded the Gatorade Track Athlete of the State Award back in February. And I want to remind voters that the District 2 hot stove meeting, and really what that means is we don't sit around a burning stove, but we meet at the library, and it's a chance to talk more informally about town business. And the next one will be at 9:00 in the morning on Saturday, the 19th. That's a week from this coming Saturday at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Comier?
Denise, thank you. Enjoy yourself. You only go around once.
Thank you. Councilor McAvoy?
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hampden.
Thank you. And I guess I just want to remind the public of the meeting Thursday, 1:00 to 6:00. It isn't a meeting, it's like a farewell for Denise. Make sure everybody turns out in support of how much you've appreciated her over the last 15 years. Thank you and good night. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Good night and thank you.